Okay, my computer says that it's 10:00 AM. So at this time, I'll call to order the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting for October 20th, 2022, and all five commissioners are in attendance. At this time, we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by me today. So. Please join me in saluting the greatest flag on earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light, which indicates you have 30 seconds left, and you should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. We only have one item right now on the administrative calendar, so we will be taking public comment on that. So at this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Public comment. We ask you to please silence your devices as you're in the room so you don't disrupt speakers. We ask you to, when you approach the podium, to please print your name so that we can get that into the record correctly, and then state your name, and then you can begin your comments.
My name is Kathy Oyster. I was going to play the sound bites of each of the commissioners, clarifying their understanding of the dangers which accompany investigating reports against vacation rental code from the October 13th, 2020 meeting. However, I only got, I've only got three minutes to speak, and your discussion and clarifications were far longer. The bullet points are, at one hour, 10 minutes, Ernie Strilo, program manager, points out that enforcement for the VHR program is reactive in nature, meaning the public has to report a problem. At one hour, 20 minutes, Commissioner Tarkanian inquires about a discussion he and Mr. Strilo had regarding the personal safety of code enforcement officers. Mr. Strilo clarified that a code enforcement officer was assaulted during an investigation of a VHR, and therefore, code enforcement officers do not investigate infractions that might cause them to meet a renting customer. At one hour, 32 minutes, Commissioner Gardner states that code enforcement officers don't carry a badge or weapon, so they cannot investigate face-to-face. Then, Mr. Strilo clarifies that they do carry a badge, just not a gun. So apparently, the weapon is necessary to investigate face-to-face infractions by renting customers. I don't carry a badge, I don't carry a gun, but I am on the front lines of enforcing your VHR rules. At one hour, 38 minutes, Commissioner Noasad made the distinction that a gross violation is any violation against the permit. Mr. Strilo said, yes, sir. At two hours, nine minutes, Commissioner Angles pointed out that in 2005, the VHR code was written because rentals were dissolving the community. He followed up with saying, we're going to come down on them real hard, like a duck on a June bug. Coming down on them real hard depends on who has the most to gain. For unpermitted rentals that are being advertised online and can be investigated from afar, the program staff does a great job, and it yields the maximum fines for the county. Because they do not yet have the cloak of protection from the program, but once the vacation rental is in the permit program, they are insulated by the program's process. Once a VHR has a permit, it has a protective layer from violation reports and penalties. Maybe that's what everyone meant by follow the money. The public must risk their safety to file a complaint. The code enforcement officers cannot go to a property to investigate an active complaint, and the sheriff is called far too often. Does this sound like it resembles residential use? The VHR program puts the neighborhoods at risk. You have made clear that you understand that enforcement is a threat to your code enforcement officers, but how about you protect your constituents and enforce zoning laws and let real estate investors make their millions elsewhere?
Thank you. Do we, do we have additional public comment?
I kind of lost my little notebook on the way in here, so we're going to go about this a little bit by ear. But I had a bunch of people in my house who were talking about commissioners and who should run and what we need. I threw a paper out in the center of the counter, which I'm going to leave for, to be put on record here. Our mission statement seems to have disappeared from our county manager's board. The people at my meeting decided that that's because most of the integrity and honesty has disappeared from our commissioners. That's why we're talking about getting in line for new commissioners. I will, this will go on record. Number two, I asked you before, Mr. Gardner, to step down, that you didn't belong in that Obviously, you didn't pay attention to me. So now, I'm going to give, put a copy of this on record, and I'm going to give Mr. Ritchie a copy of it. You bribed a public official. Let me read it to you. Tim, Thursday, there's a chairman, there's a Chamber of Commerce golf tournament, and I need a driver. How are you at driving? I'll pay your entry fee. It sounds like a bribe to me there, Mr. Gardner. So I'm going to ask you again, you shouldn't be in that seat. And I'm going to give this to our legal people, I'm going to put this on record, I have one for our legal people, I have one for our district attorney. So, now, let's go on because I lost my, left my bullet points out. Back in June of last year, you hired a behead billing official. Tom Delair, as I've complained before, he's down coaching high school on county time. Mr. Ritchie said, that's a violation of employment, he shouldn't be doing that. Mr. Delair right in here admits that he's down coaching high school baseball. Mr. Ritchie, or Mr. Delair seemed to leave out the part again that he was a senior superintendent for SenCon Homes, which had a class act lawsuit against him and filed bankruptcy. Now, during that same speech, he appreciated the fact that you guys okayed some contracts for us. Contracts to engineers because our head billing official does not have the certification he needs. It cost us $113,000 from June of last year till June of this year. Now, because he was unqualified, we had to hire engineers to do our plant inspection, we had to hire people to do our inspections, but in June, that went away. Mr. Gates, Mr. Delair, decided we don't need to do that anymore, so they didn't renew the contracts. And I'll finish in the second three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another day in the dream.
So, Mr. Gibson, before you start, I have something that I wish to say to you.
Mr. Gardner, you're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order. I am running this meeting, and I'm not out of order. So anyways, I don't enjoy saying this, Mr. Gibson, however, I feel compelled to do so. The observation of this board has been that your attitude has been disruptive of this board and disruptive of other members of the public. I would caution you that should we determine you continue to do and display this type of attitude, we will ask you to participate through electronic means in the future. Is that clear?
Commissioner Gardner, if you had a system that actually worked without the tech glitches, I'd be more than happy to do so, but you, sir, will be stepping down in the near future for obstructing, for obstructing the freedom of speech.
Very good. I'm not here to debate this, I want to know if you understand this.
Sir, you tried to have me 86 from this meeting unlawfully and unjustly. You lied about the candidate meeting and said that you had a personal discussion with me in terms of our protocols for meeting.
Mr. Gibson, I'm not going to debate you. If you do not wish to offer your public comment at this time and not be disruptive to this board and disrespectful to this board, I would ask that our deputy, our undersheriff, remove you from these premises.
I'm with the truth today.
Do you understand that?
I'm with the truth today. I do not understand.
Do you understand that?
I will continue within the guidelines.
Mr. Alges, would you please remove Mr. Gibson from this room? Thank you. Apparently, you did not understand the message.
I understand where you're coming from. I'm going to give my three minutes.
Okay, no, not today, you're not. Sorry.
Were you going to arrest me for freedom of speech?
Yes, you removed me, you just stopped in the meeting.
What's that now?
All right, well, we got out.
You may have, if you wish to display a proper attitude, you may have three minutes at closing public comment.
Social form is broken, sir, we're trying to fix it, we're trying to help it.
Okay. Now, would you please leave these so we can proceed with our proceedings?
You know, I'm not here challenging the experience of the board, I'm trying to fix the social.
Mr. Alges, would you please remove Mr. Gibson from the premises? Thank you.
You may come back for a closing public comment if you wish to display proper attitudes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Please approach the chair. Mr. Ingles, we'll get, we'll get to you in just a second, okay? If you'd just give us a few minutes so that Mr. Gibson connects at the building, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And then we'll go to you. Thank you, Mr. Alges. Okay, please proceed.
Good morning. Julie Duda. The first issue, fiscal responsibility during this 40-year-high inflationary time. Today, on the fast-track, no-discussion agenda, there are 13 separate items, and on the administrative agenda for discussion, there are two items. One is for action, the other one is presentation only. Total expense for the 13 items on the fast-track, no-discussion agenda is approximately $1.5 million. Some of these items are on the fast track because they were part of the budget approved back when the Federal Reserve was describing inflation as transitory. Chairman Powell has since made a very significant pivot with economists predicting pain and challenges ahead, and CEOs taking appropriate fiduciary action. In June, county and town employees received a 9% salary increase, 2% COLA plus 7%. According to Aid Bailey, the county's independent auditor, the 7% increase translates to $3.6 million. Reference for this amount is on page 1,021 of the June 16th BOCC Minutes documentation. One item on today's fast-track agenda authorizes a Texas company to study the county's compensation and classification of employees and prepare a report. The company was chosen by county staff, cost of the report, $110,000. We can guess where this will go, the question is, will county management pivot to a more conservative fiduciary role? And will a pivot be communicated to the people of Douglas County? The second issue is about crossing the line in resisting participation by the people. After many months of requesting a relevant item be included on the BOCC agenda, a commissioner has been compelled to make the violation public. This is an alarming situation in our local county government and a situation that could have been avoided. As an advocate for impactful participation by the people, I support the action of this commissioner in his effort to place an issue on the agenda. To county management, a reminder that a commissioner is a man who represents thousands of people in Douglas County. If opinions differ between management and a commissioner on items for the agenda, the rights of the people through elected representation have priority, in my opinion. I will continue to stand up for the rights of this commissioner to have his issue on the agenda and applaud his resolute attitude. Local government, county and town, is by the people and for the people. Will you agree? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bergens.
Good morning, county commissioners. Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk Treasurer. I just wanted to get up today and remind everyone that early voting starts this Saturday. Election Day is 19 days away. It is November 8th, Tuesday, November 8th. We have multiple drop-off locations for your mail ballot if you want to drop it off to us. It's all, all the information is in the sample ballots that went out. Mail ballots also have gone out, so if anyone from the public hasn't received their sample ballot or mail ballot, they can reach out to the elections office, and we can produce a second ballot or additional sample ballot for you. There's a lot of information in the sample ballot about where we will be. Early voting is at Douglas County Community Center and here at the historic courthouse, and it will run Saturdays from 10:00 to 2:00, and then Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So I just wanted to remind everyone, don't forget to get out and vote.
And along with that, I believe that you will be using this room on November the 3rd for voting by in-person, and so.
This is, we do ballot deconstruction, but we will be using the room.
Okay, so, okay, so we will be having our Board of Commissioners meeting at CVIC Hall on November 3rd, 10:00 AM, so, okay, very good. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, is there public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. For clarification, our November 3rd meeting will be at Carson Valley Inn in the Valley, Valley Ballroom, I believe.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
I do have one person online with their hand raised who indicated they would like to provide public comment. Jack, do you have opening public comment at this time?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name for the record, then we'll start your time.
Great. My name is Jack Johnson. I'm currently a senior at Georgia Tall High School, and I've lived in Stateline, Nevada my whole life. I've seen the beneficial effect of the city of South Lake Tahoe's ban on free plastic bags for grocery stores, and the science backs it up, so that's why I would like to see a similar law in Douglas County. While this might not be as big of a deal for those of you in the valley, protecting the lake from microplastics and all the harms that plastics bring along is really important for our community. This is a product that lasts literally maybe 10 minutes and is a prime example of the unnecessary use of plastic. They're notorious for spilling out into the trashcans, or spilling out of trashcans, trash trucks, and landfills and becoming part, or ending up in the lake. According to the California Grocers Association, when plastic bags are free, it ends up only being about 15% of people who use reusable bags, but when there, any charge is added to these plastic bags, immediately after the law is passed, up to 75% of people use reusable bags, and within a year, 90% of people use reusable bags. They can still be available, but if you charge for them, even like 10 cents, something really small, people generally decline them, and we really want to incentivize reduction of plastic bags and harmful chemicals to protect the lake. So I realize Douglas County isn't in California, but I think it's a good idea for any local government to implement, so I'm asking you to consider this matter for future agenda. Thank you for your time. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no further public comment online.
Very good, and we'll bring it back to the board, and I know Commissioner Ingles had something to offer.
When I was in Vietnam, we'd hear the crackle of the radio at night. It was a frightening experience because you knew it was going to be a fire mission, and at night, it's particularly hard. But the point is, I'd been in Vietnam for several months, and I started to realize this, and what are we doing here? And these poor Vietnamese people are actually very gentle, and they were fighting for their lives, and it didn't make sense until a few years later, but the Pentagon Papers came out, and we didn't know what was going on over there because we didn't have any access to cell phones or computers like we do today. And years later, we found out the whistleblower by the name of Daniel Ellsberg came out about the Pentagon Papers, where the Pentagon and the Joint Chiefs of Staff were trying to prolong the Vietnam War because they're making so much money. And I'll tell you, we saw so much stuff being dropped on that country and those poor people, I thought the place was going to sink. So now, we're up for an election, and we're seeing something else. The point of all this is never trust your government, and be sure to get out and vote in this election. It's particularly important. Thank you.
Amen. Commissioners, any other? Okay, thank you, then we'll close public comment, and we'll go to the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noasad, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to approve the agenda as, as proposed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. Go to approval of the previous minutes for possible action, discussion to approve the draft minutes of September 15th, 2022, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, whether any addition or corrections to the moment, to the minutes?
I'm not aware of any.
In that case, I move that we approve the minutes of the January 15th meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles, to approve the draft minutes of September 15th, 2022, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. We will now entertain the consent calendar. Commissioners, is there any desire for any of you to move any of the items off the consent calendar? Sensing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, items A through M.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noasad, to approve the consent calendar, items A through M as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0. We will now move to the administrative agenda. I will be reading the agenda title into the public record, and we'll have the discretion to determine how the item will be presented, although there's only two items today. Agenda items may be considered ahead of, well, that's kind of irrelevant now. Public comment will be taken on items that are identified for possible action, which is item number one. So we'll go into that now. Item number one, for possible action, presentation and discussion on the Douglas County Indigent Defense Program, including an overview of the recent history of the program and board direction on possible alternatives for program changes in fiscal year 2324, including maintaining the current plan, creating a county office of indigent defense, or transferring the program to the state public defender as allowed by NRS 180.450, Section B, by providing notice to the state of, to the state by November 1st of 2022. This is being presented by county manager Patrick Gates. Mr. Gates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me start with a brief history of the Indigent Defense Program in Douglas County. As indicated in the staff report, I won't go into great detail, but there was a lawsuit filed in the state, and that lawsuit was settled by the state of Nevada. Over the last couple of legislative sessions, this Nevada legislature has changed the laws around indigent defense. As of last year, or September of last year, the board approved the Douglas County Plan for the provision of indigent defense services under the new law. So we're a little over a year into the program, being under the county manager's office. Historically, this program has been under the district courts, and the form of the program is basically to contract for services. We have five attorneys that are on full-time contract with the county. The board may recall that we increased the amount of those contracts from $195,000 a year to $265,000 a year. That was because we were losing attorneys, some of the new state requirements, there's reporting requirements, and the state dictates how the contracts have to be formulated. In order to retain them, we had to increase that. We also hired a coordinator on contract, who's in the audience today. And as we made that transition and we lost attorneys, we had to have attorneys appointed by the court on a case-by-case basis, and so we entered into multiple contracts that were hourly in basis. Most of those are rather small and were signed under my signature authority. I believe some of those have come to the board in the last year as well. Last year, we spent a little over a million dollars. One of the provisions of the current law is that the county's financial obligation for this program is limited. It's based on a couple of fiscal years that they looked at as a historic basis. So we are liable for, it's just under $900,000 a year. Any expenses above that are reimbursed by the state, and the state did make appropriations in the last session, and we have received reimburse, reimbursement from the state for those cost overages. The costs have to be allowable per the state rules, that means we're following our plan, that means we're using their time tracking system, those sort of things. Although we did go through some, some rough period as we scrambled to get attorneys on board and redo contracts, I think the program currently, as I said, we have all five of the contracts filled. We do still have some attorneys on hourly, because they were assigned cases, I anticipate that will decrease over time. There are basically three different ways that counties can approach this program in terms of its structure. One is to do what we're doing now, which is to have contract attorneys and a contract coordinator. Another would be to create an office of indigent defense services in the county as a county department, and staff it with attorneys who would be county employees, kind of like the district attorney's office. Some counties have done that. One of the challenges with that is recruitment and retention, and it's always challenging in the current environment to. It's always challenging in the current environment to hire and maintain staff. However, that would give us the maximum amount of control over the program. The other option is state law allows for the transfer of some or all the program to the state. And the reason this is on the agenda today is we have a deadline to indicate to the state if we would like to have them take over some or all the program for next fiscal year. That would be starting July 1 of next year. So we have to give them notice so they have time to build a budget and take it through their legislative process. So the deadline for that is November 1st. And I did hand out the form that we are to submit to the state. In the staff report, I talk a lot about transferring the entire program to the state, and also there's some out on the table for the audience as well. But there are other options. Let me talk a minute about conflict counsel. When you have an office of indigent defense, whether it's at the state or local, if there is a case that involves multiple defendants, and they may need separate legal representation, you can't have attorneys in the same office representing those different individuals as a potential conflict of interest. So all the programs, Carson City has an office, for instance, they also have contracted conflict attorneys. So if they have those kind of cases, those get assigned to a conflict counsel. The state could also provide conflict counsel. There's also a provision to have them handle death penalty cases. And there's also different levels of service, indigent appellate services, parole violation hearings, et cetera, that the state could take over. My recommendation is that we not transfer any part of this program to the state at this time. I think certainly the state public defender, I'm sure, is full of good people, capable people. But if we transfer this to the state, we're going to lose a level of control, and I don't recommend that we do that at this time. As I said, the maximum contribution we have is just under $900,000 a year. And all of the options that I briefly talked about are roughly in the same ballpark in terms of costs, right about $1.7 million a year. But again, per state law, that is a decision for this board. It's not my decision, so that's why this is on the agenda today. I would like direction on whether or not you would like us to transfer this program and submit this form to the state for next fiscal year. And I'd also like a little bit of direction on if you are interested in looking at the option of creating a county department. If I could get some direction on that today, we could put that together as part of the budget process, and the board could review that as part of their budget review starting next spring. You wouldn't be making any commitment to do that today. It would just give me an indication that you're interested in seeing that as an option in the budget process coming up. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear from the program coordinator who's sitting in the audience in council. It's good to see you. What are your thoughts on this issue?
Eric Lopez, for the record, the current contract coordinator for indigent defense services. It's good to see you too, Mr. Rice. I would share the opinion of, I do share the opinion of Patrick Gates not to go with the state public defender's office at this time. With regard to what we have right now, that would be my recommendation is to continue as we are right now, maintaining the status quo. We did have difficulty recruiting attorneys to fill the vacant spots. We went from five down, lost three of those people, and have hired three new people, so we're back to five. Of the people we've hired, they are experienced attorneys, two of them from Vegas, one from Reno. They all have had their own private practices prior to coming to Douglas County, and I don't know if we went with a county's office, a county office, that any of them would be interested in giving up private practice to come work to the county, which potentially means we have to recruit entirely new attorneys to fill those spots. And as difficult as it was to recruit for these contract positions, I think the reality is it'll be much more difficult to recruit for the county office. With regard to that, we've seen the Elko Public Defender's Office go long period of time, unable to fill vacant spots. I think one of the spots, I think they were down at least one position for over two years. With regard to the county, Carson City's State Public Defender's Office, I know that they've got vacancies. I don't know if they've filled those or not, but I know they've had vacancies, and I know they're in the process of recruiting, or were in the process of recruiting for those. I know that Washoe County's Public Defender's Office also recently has lost employees that have left. So I do know that the retention is difficult. I think with our contract situation, we've been able to retain attorneys for a long time, and I'm hopeful that we can continue to do that. It did take an increase in pay, but that increase had not happened since 2006, or at least that period of time. So I do think we've got a good situation right now. I know we have qualified attorneys, and I'm hopeful that those attorneys would continue to provide good service and continue to want to work for Douglas County in the independent contractor position. But I did want to emphasize the difficulty I think we'll have in recruiting and retaining through a county public defender's office, and I don't recommend at this time giving up the control to the state public defender's office.
Please, continue.
And if I might add to that, that what Patrick Gates also mentioned was the possibility of giving up some portions of it. So the appeals and the parole board hearings and parole violation hearings, we could transfer that work to the state public defender's office. My understanding is it would be no additional cost to the county, and that certainly would be worth considering because it would reduce the workload of the existing attorneys at no additional cost to the county. With regard to death penalty cases, we do not, to my knowledge, we do not have anybody, any of our five attorneys qualified to do death penalty cases. So not that we ever want to see a death penalty case in Douglas County. We don't want those circumstances here to warrant that. But in the event we did, that's something we could consider, working with the public defender's office too, the state public defender's office. There is a contribution for that, but because we are exceeding our maximum contribution, it really shouldn't mean more dollars. So those are worth considering.
I had a conversation with our district attorney yesterday, who echoed most of the concerns that you have. After talking with him and after listening to you, it's my feeling that we ought to keep the status quo at least for another year, and then revisit it, and not make, number one, I'm definitely not willing to give up the office to the state. Thank you very much. And I would like to see us maintain the status quo for at least another year and then revisit it.
Thank you. Commissioner Tartanian, anything? Commissioner Noa Sad? Commissioner Ingles? No? Okay, at this time then, this is for possible action, so we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment in regards to item one here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there are no participants online.
Very good, we'll bring it back to the board. Sensing no, sensing no further comments, is there?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we maintain the program with the current structure of independent contractors with indigent defense attorneys and the indigent defense coordinator with support from the administrative assistant position previously approved by this board.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noa Sad, I believe, to maintain the program as contracted service with independent indigent defense attorneys and an indigent defense coordinator with support from an administrative assistant position. Any further discussion on that? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. There you go. I hope that gives you what you wanted, right? I mean, the direction, so. Okay. At this time, we'll go into presentation only, item two, reports, updates from county commission members concerning the various boards and/or commissions that they have, that they may be a member of, or liaison to, or meeting functions they have attended. We'll start down at the bottom. Mr. Noa Sad? Mr. Ingles? Mr. Rice?
Not since last week.
Me neither. Okay. So yes, we did have a very long meeting. So item number two is dispensed with, and we'll go to public, closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. So is there any public comment here in chambers?
Do I need to sign in again? I'll do it. Okay, where I left off is, we signed these contracts. I added them all up. I used a freedom of information thing. We got four contracts. It was supposed to come back for the consent calendar on 12/16/21. It didn't make it on the consent calendar. What we did is we created contracts of $49,000 each, so our county manager didn't have to ask for consent. One of them, contracts with RCI, we spent $48,996, but in total, we spent $113,000 because the person you five okayed for a head building official, don't have his certification, is not qualified for the job. So we, the people of Douglas County, are paying an extra $113,000 out the window. Now, I've checked certifications. Also, in the paper that I gave Mr. Ritchie there, Tom Delara said, well, he's going to get his other certifications, and this is huge. That was a year and a half ago. I printed them out this morning. He ain't got them. I can't find one certification on Brad, whatever his name is, Simko, one of our inspectors. I can't find any certification on Scott McCullough, but I find these people's signatures on hard cards on the jobs. Mr. Ritchie said, that ain't going to happen. He told me that personally. If they aren't certified, they aren't supposed to be there. I'm finding inspections on electrical certifications that they don't have electrical certification for. I thank Mr. Tartanian, when that all came up and they were trying to eliminate that, it said they shall be certified to do that. And I apologize for not having my card with me again, but I got my freedom of information back from the assistant administrator, and the bills on all these things went nine, five, seven, one, four. I'm sure our accounting department is not putting them in there that way. So either somebody's playing games or whatever, but I added every one of these up. This is money we wasted. Now, I thank Mr. Tartanian, he put an article in there this morning about turning some money down last time because he didn't think the taxpayers should be spent there. You guys been debating on sending money back to the convention center for a trail or something. I'm very, not very aware of this. I'm trying to study it. The people spoke on that. You guys had a meeting a while back for a half million dollars on getting from California to our convention center, whatever it was, and I excuse myself. But the people spoke. They voted that down. They didn't want to spend their tax dollars up to the convention center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Douglas County has put in place over the past 18 years a vacation rental program that seeks to control and protect the vacation renter at the expense of neighborhood constituents. Douglas County's 2020 master plan, as well as the Vacation Rental Code, reference maintaining the neighborhoods as issues, as to issues of community character, environmental impact, resident security and safety, and aesthetics, and to resemble existing residential use in our single-family residential zoned neighborhoods. The commissioners had an opportunity to ban vacation rentals in the Tahoe township, which you yourselves acknowledge are too dangerous for your employees of code enforcement to approach. The same program, as stated by program manager Ernie Strilo, is a reactive program, meaning the neighbors must report before any violations are addressed. If the complaint is to be believed, a photo or video is to accompany the claim against a short-term rental. Now, if we're supposing these VHRs are behaving as a neighborhood normally would, the neighbors would feel comfortable approaching the rental and asking them to turn down their music, move their cars, put trash inside the bear box, or shut off the lights facing our homes, et cetera. However, approaching the rental homes is deemed too dangerous by the county to send a code enforcement officer. How can you possibly consider this short-term rental activity as resembling existing residential uses? The Douglas County commissioners and only the commissioners are responsible for placing the constituents in these neighborhoods in a position of jeopardized safety. Not once have you told these constituents that code enforcement officers will not approach a rental unit due to the risk for their personal safety. You must ban these short-term rentals whose activities within our community are risky and that we cannot approach without caution. The public should know that a code enforcement officer was assaulted, and that the county will not send a code enforcement officer to approach a rental residence. The short-term rental use within our residential zoning is unacceptable. And Commissioner Ingles, you're right. We should stand up to government. We should demand safety and security. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, is there, I don't see any other members of the public here, so I assume that we're done with public comment here in chambers.
I would like to provide public comment, sir.
Pardon me?
I would like to provide public comment.
Oh, my gosh. Okay, well, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to offer us the online public comment, but you're certainly welcome to offer public comment yourself, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I just wanted to let you know that we are currently accepting applications for our volunteer advisory boards. These applications can be found on our website, douglascountynv.gov. On this main page, if you hover your mouse over the word government and select county boards and commissions, this will take you to our page. You can scroll down and select apply. Application deadline is Friday, December 9th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now, I will ask, Ms. Johnson, do you have public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Very good, we'll bring it back to the board. Any additional comments? Okay, I just want to remind the public that our next meeting on November 3rd will be at the Carson Valley Inn, okay? Not to be confused with CVIC Hall, Carson Valley Inn, okay? And November 3rd at 10 o'clock. And I would remind our public also that this evening concludes our monthly wine walk season put on by the town of Gardinerville, or the Main Street Gardinerville. So anyways, with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Recording stopped.